Meeting is streaming live, very good.
I'm back.
There you go, now you're back. Hope everybody had a great holiday, I want to call our April 8th meeting of the County Planning Commission to order. Roll call, we do have a quorum. Terrific, any public comment, any public around?
I did not get any requests from the public.
Okay, here's no comment, let's move on to minutes from our previous meeting, everybody have a chance to review them?
Yes.
Any comments, recommendations, revisions?
Looks good.
Rose, you're muted.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of our last meeting.
Thanks Jerry.
Second.
Thank you Cindy, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
opposed, our minutes are approved. Bills?
The only bill that you might be questioning is for the legal ad for Sapa.
Yeah, wow, a little pricey.
That was for six, that was for six municipalities, I mean, could you imagine what it would have been if we did all nine?
Wow.
Waverly's doing it themselves, Granton's doing it themselves, of course Clark Summit's finished, so yeah, that was, that was for six out of the nine.
Did you expect it to be that high?
Steve ballparked it.
We had a good guess. That was before we knew a couple of the towns were doing it on their own.
Wow.
And does anybody read it?
Obviously somebody did, I got, I got an email from somebody who wanted a copy of West Abington's, they saw in the paper they were passing a new ordinance and they wanted a copy of it, I said, you gotta get it from the township, but it doesn't go into effect until, you know, the other, the other ones are done.
Okay.
Somebody did read it.
Grand times only game in town, they can charge whatever they like. Any other comments or? On our bills? Entertain a motion to approve our bills?
I make that motion.
Thank you Bruce, second. Dave Johns?
Back in, yes.
Dave, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Well, our bills are approved for the month, communications, wow, they got communications this month, highlight a few for us.
No.
Grants?
Most of them were grants. There was one grant. I'm trying to find it now, item number F, the county is looking to do a study for ATV trails. So the county is sponsoring that, you know, we have a problem in all the municipalities with ATVs and people say there's no place to ride them, Heritage Valley Trail, Heritage Valley does not allow them, a couple other places, so the county's undertaken a study. And it's actually being worked on through our office with Sandy. The other item on here is. Item E, Eastern PA Land Holdings, that's the old Cineram plant, they're building the new can manufacturer there. They just basically put up the shell of the building in the last couple of weeks, have completed that, and they're already looking to expand.
Well.
So we have criteria on reviewing expansions and the expansion did not meet the criteria, so I just sent them a letter back stating that we didn't need, we did not need to review it, but all of it might want to see additional information on it.
Good. Anything else?
Everything else was just regular grants.
Does anybody have any questions on any communications? Hearing none, let's move on, whole business. Okay, separate emails sent out to everyone?
Yeah.
And I want to apologize, I was putting the agenda together on Monday, and in the process of scanning and printing and everything else, our copier scanner decided it wanted to take a holiday. And we finally got the repair guy in at three o'clock and he was working on it and a couple of parts fell out and he doesn't even know what they're supposed to do or where they came from, so. Going through the agenda after I emailed it, I found that those two pages were missing.
Not a problem, not a problem.
A lot of, a lot of things going down with transportation planning. I promise you that all of our invoicing is now into PennDOT and being processed, so we are up to date, except for the first quarter. And we'll be working on that. We've also, Tina and I have been attending virtual training on environmental justice and Title VI, we actually had another seminar just before this meeting. And that Federal Highway is really pushing it and we're going to need to update our Title VI and. EJ plan this year, it's four years old, it needs to be updated every five or so years, so that will be our next item. Network planning, we had a number of meetings on a number of issues, Brenda, myself, with Blakely Borough, officials on Main Avenue, Main Street and Blakely. The road is really in rough shape, there's a lot of spots where the road is rippling, and in our discussions with the Borough Manager from Blakely, he noted that when they were doing some sewer work out there, they dug down a few inches and they actually hit brick. So it's the old Providence Turnpike underneath there, so basically, according to the county engineers and county roads and bridges, it's not just a mill and surface, it's a total reconstruct. Full depth reconstruction, which could be anywhere from two to four million dollars with the information that we had, so we told them we would work on it. It is the next segment of Main Avenue that we wanted to keep put on for the tip projects. Along with that, we had a meeting with the Chamber of Commerce on an extension of Valley View Drive in Jessup and Archibald. They're looking to extend the existing roadway from where it ends at Lakeview Drive with a cul-de-sac to Salem Road. And they had three alternatives ranging from sixteen to twenty-four million dollars. Again, we don't have funding on the tip to accomplish something like that, and Harry, you remember the infamous Phil for four million dollars that we had funding for? After that earmark, so we have a similar situation on the twenty-four million dollar one crossing Creek and Archibald, so the cheapest alternative is to use an existing underpass for sixteen million, so we did talk to about that.
You told Bob Durkin that, didn't you?
Yeah.
Yeah. And the bridge will take about. Oh, twenty years to approved.
The strange part is, and I'd love to know how this happened, is the underpass that was put in for the haul road where they were hauling the ash there, is eighteen inches too narrow to accommodate two lane truck traffic. So how that happened, I don't know. If that was there, the roadway could have been constructed for no problem. Finally, we had a meeting with officials at Fell Township on the intersection at SR 103 and Jefferson Street. And anybody that goes to Frank's place knows that intersection. The house at the corner, House Bar combination burned down last year, and the house behind it was in bad shape, township actually went and bought both properties. With the intentions of turning the land over to PennDOT and having PennDOT realign or remove or replace that intersection. So the district office is going to send people out there to scope it and see what would need to be done with that, but that is a good public-private partnership, but again, there's no funding on the tip currently for it. Although that might qualify depending on accident history for highway safety money, so PennDOT was going to scope that. While all this was taking place, we got contacted by Congressman Cartwright's office with the new transportation bill that's working its way through Washington right now. There may be some funding called member affiliated funding. I don't want to use the E word, but that's kind of what it is, earmarks. So we were working with the congressman's office and as I said, we didn't have the money for Main Avenue, Main Street and Blakely, but now that this has come up, going through our list of projects. This is the project that we're going to propose to the congressman's office for additional funding. Along with that, he has somewhere in the neighborhood of about eighteen million dollars to work with, but he has a portion of that developed already for transit projects, naturally the other counties, Luzerne, Pike Wayne, Monroe and his district would have to have funding. So we're looking at probably about seven or eight million dollars, but one of the other projects that's high on the list with PennDOT and with the governor's office is Greenridge Street Bridge Replacement. And that is, that would take about five million, give or take, so Main Avenue kind of falls in that sweet spot between the five and eight million that's available. So we're working on that, we just got the information this morning from GPI from the county engineers, so I'll be going through that, so we can get that information put on the website for the congressman. Brenda, you want to add anything?
No, just that, you know, we were very happy to have input and have the opportunity to be able to make some suggestions that could be put forth, because I don't think it was always like that in the past, so, you know, we're happy that that's the route that they're taking.
Are you only making suggestions to the congressman for this? Member, what'd you call it, state member?
Yeah, a couple of actors that they're using.
Are you also making recommendations for the bigger infrastructure program?
Just for this piece at, at this moment that Steve's referring to.
Okay.
Because these projects have to be somewhat, you know, shovel ready in terms of transportation, that doesn't mean shovel ready tomorrow, but within the timeframe that we would have a lot to spend, which I think was within the next five years.
They would like to see it on the tip within two years, if it's not already on the tip, and then under construction within the five-year period. And we were looking at projects that don't have to really undergo any kind of environmental review, don't have any right-of-way considerations, don't have to worry about a lot of utilities, because that's what slows down the process.
No, it's good he's got you guys involved, good. Okay.
Couple other things, I did do a seminar along with Chris Chapman from Luzerne County and two reps from the district office on how planning and engineering work together for King's College, it was part of their engineering seminar for their senior students. So that was a pretty interesting process that we went through, Chris and I had about a forty-minute presentation and the district came in with their twenty minutes of, once we give, give them projects to do, how they actually fund them. And, and the students had a lot of questions on it and it really worked out pretty well for us, so that's something we're probably going to do in the future. It just so happens that the professor at King's was put on our Transportation Advisory Committee, he actually reached out to me a while ago about being on the committee because he was, he was interested in working on transportation, he is actually a civil engineer, so we put him on the committee and he actually put us to work.
Professor Petoniak, nice ring to it.
My next, my next life.
I was just gonna say that.
Very good, okay. Anything else on transportation?
We're moving along with our freight plan, I really didn't put it on the, the meeting here, but we had a meeting, I'm on the work committee, the work group for that, with the five MPOs. We had a work group meeting Monday and we're going to be having another group meeting next week to go over the freight plan, so hopefully, next month I'll actually have the parameters of what we're going to be looking for for an RFQ, RFP.
Are you spending down your PennDOT money? Did we spend it down last fiscal year?
No, we did not, I don't have the figures in front of me, but we had a sizable amount left over with Matt leaving and with the workload, we didn't really spend all of the funding.
And I guess we're going to run into the same problem again this year?
Depending on what happens with my position and some other positions, yeah.
And Brenda, you're working on those? We're trying to get more staff?
Sorry, I was trying to find the mute button, yes, we are, and we have some good news actually, Mary Liz and I have been interviewing student interns. And it looks like we're going to be able to have two interns starting in May, one that, except it was from Bloomsburg.
Yes.
And then we have another one that we interviewed that we're looking at and potentially, if the, the next applicant doesn't work out, we'll, we'll make an offer to them, but the good news is one individual is going to be graduating and potentially looking for some permanent position, which would be perfect, and that's what we like to see. You know, have them come in and get some experience and then, you know, for us too, it's, it's just a win-win situation because we can see, you know, how they work out before we actually would offer permanent position, so. We're thrilled, we haven't had one in a very, very long time, Mary Liz and Steve can probably tell you how long, so we were happy to be able to make that happen for us.
No, that's great, are they, I'm sorry, are they paid internships or?
Yes, yes, so we were, we were able to work that out as well.
Wow, that's terrific.
We actually, Brenda, do you want to tell them about Luzerne County and stealing our?
Our planner. So we had interviewed an individual that was, we felt would be an outstanding candidate. Unfortunately, well, actually, I guess it is a positive because, you know, we are taking the advice of the board and, and, and all of your input and we're going to be looking to upgrade our positions so that we can compete and, and, and gain and retain quality talent that, that's needed. Unfortunately, it didn't happen as fast as we would have liked, so we ended up losing this individual to Luzerne County.
Because of money?
Um.
They live there?
No, she lives in Susquehanna County, she's actually going to go on commute.
Right, right. Yeah, we were, we were trying to make it happen quicker to be able to have the higher salary, it didn't happen, unfortunately, you have to follow all the protocol and salary board and such, when, especially when you're dealing with union positions, so. But we're, we're, we're hopeful that, you know, maybe we might still have another opportunity there.
And hopefully the, the internship program, as Brenda said, will, will work, Harry, you remember, I started here forty years ago as an intern.
Long time ago, yeah. We had Penn State and Bloomsburg interns, didn't we?
Yeah.
We did, yeah. Other colleges too.
We only received, it was Westchester and Bloomsburg, right, those were the only two. Yes, yes, okay, so those were the schools we interviewed, students from this round, but we had a very good response, we were, we were really pleased. I think we had, what, maybe eight?
Yeah.
Eight responses that, you know, were, were interested in us to interview them, so.
Guys, keep chugging away, if you need the board to do anything, please let us know, will you?
Okay, thank you.
Um, let's continue on, moving on, Sapa?
Sapa.
Okay, well, we had our little previous discussion, we did have our virtual public forum, there was about fifteen, fifteen or eighteen public members on, it went very well. Just a few general questions, we tried to nip in the bud the, the specific questions that were geared towards specific municipalities and certain issues that they were having, we kind of took care of them before we had the forum, you know, we had a, we had to direct them to the local municipality for their concerns. Like I said, it went well, everybody, you know, we had representative from all the communities on and we're in the process of adopting, like I said, West Abington adopted Tuesday night, Dalton is scheduled to adopt it tonight. Next Monday, we have done more South Abington and Newton, hopefully, and then Scranton, I think is, I think Scranton did not want us to advertise, I think they're not quite ready yet, so they may be delayed a month, and we do have waiver leave for May tenth, they would, right now would be the last ones unless Granton is delayed further as well. But hopefully this all plays out in the end.
Yeah, I hope so, keep us posted on that Newton situation.
If that, if there's a problem there, we're going to have to reconvene and figure out what we do because they do have mobile home parks, which nobody else does.
Yeah.
So that, we would have to find somebody to take that and it's going to require somebody to amend their ordinance or do something, so we'll have to have a discussion on how that's going to work.
I just, it just blows my mind with those being the one, that community being the one that started this whole process all those years ago. They're so involved and so gung ho and getting.
They didn't want certain things there because of, they had a few lawsuits and stuff and they didn't, you know, and now look what they're, they're going to put themselves back in the same situation.
Exactly, yeah, yeah.
Remind them.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And Mary Liz, I, I think Ted is aware of that whole situation with the lawsuit and the asphalt plant and why this started, but just make sure that he is when he goes to that meeting, because that might be something you might want to bring up, because there's probably some new people on board since then and.
Yeah, I think.
He might be aware of it, but, you know, might not realize how much it cost, how costly it was to them.
Right, right, I didn't want to tell Denise, I haven't told Denisha, because I didn't want to. I don't know who would be good or bad for Denise to go to the meeting, I, I don't want you to get her upset and.
Yeah.
So.
She certainly would, would be a cheerleader for it, but.
But I don't know if she'd get a little emotional, you know what I mean?
Yeah, I think she probably would, yeah, that would, she would be very upset, I'm sure.
Yes.
Now, we have somebody questions on Sapa? Let's move on, rail passenger.
Okay. In congressman's office and with the appropriations, we really haven't had any meetings yet, but I did include the link on the agenda for the article that was in the paper, if nobody saw it. Amtrak has put us on the list, we are on their maps, they are aware of the project, and as I mentioned at last month's meeting, the New York delegation is also pushing it to expand service to Buffalo and to Albany through this line, so there's a lot of consensus building around it and with the possible funding coming out of Washington, I think there was eighty billion dollars for new rail projects in President Biden's proposed bill, this has a real good shot. And it basically is going to come down to the stumbling block we've had over the years is operating funds. Whether or not Pennsylvania and New Jersey will be able to come up with the funding for operations, capital with this bill will not be a problem. So that's where we're at right now, we'll keep everybody up to date.
If Amtrak is operating passenger service, Pennsylvania and New Jersey wouldn't have to come in with any operating money though, would they?
If it was an Amtrak service, no, if we do the New Jersey Transit, yes.
Correct, yeah, now, I keep wondering, I read that article, I'm wondering, Amtrak's just throwing this out here just to try to get on the good side of the administration, because they know the connection, you know, it's Biden. But they, who knows, I hope it works out, I hope it works out. Anybody other questions on the rail? Let's move on, oh, hazard mitigation.
Sweeten to the point, it has been adopted.
Yay.
Yesterday. So as soon as we get the resolution, we'll send it down to FEMA and we can start our process of notifying all the municipalities.
And how long do they have to approve?
I, I said, I think it's two years, but we're, we're not going to tell them that, we're going to tell them, you know, within the next few months.
Got to be approved before the next disaster.
Yeah, exactly.
Terrific, terrific, any questions on hazard mitigation? Chesapeake Bay. We're moving on Chesapeake Bay, good.
Chesapeake, yeah, we had a virtual meeting, the steering committee, which was Brendan, myself, county engineer, Conservation District and the Nicole from Environmental Sustainability, again, conservation is taking the lead. There was a toolbox, the Conservation District had actually reviewed on what they're looking for and I forget what her name is, it's Cheryl, I guess, from the Conservation District, really had a lot of issues with it, so that most of the meeting was going over those issues. And then we're going to have a stakeholders meeting the end of the month, we just got a list of the people on, there's quite a few people on the stakeholders list, so. We'll be having a kickoff meeting with them on April twenty eighth, virtually as well. I mean, they claim this whole thing has to be done by September, so I, good luck, but.
This year?
EEP has quite an ambitious agenda for this. And they did hire a consultant, he is from Borton Lawson, Joshua Glace, his name is.
Good luck on this, any questions on that?
And just as a side note, a couple of months ago, Steve Solan and I got an email through the University of Vermont, who's working with the Chesapeake Bay to do a land cover study. And they've, they've prepared maps of land cover for our area, and they want us to take a look at the maps to see if there's any corrections or changes that need to be done. So we're going to start that, which is part of this project, but it's separate from what the Chesapeake Bay Committee is doing right now.
Good, good, any other questions, guys? Or a comprehensive plan?
Okay, I sent out the announcements that the plan was available for review under Pennsylvania Municipalities Planning Code, there's a forty-five day review period. So I sent out emails to all forty municipalities, the twelve school districts that are in or touch Lockwana County and all of the adjacent counties, so our forty-five day review period starts at March twenty fifth. We're looking at late April's, possible late April's commissioners meeting or May's meeting to have the public hearing, depending on their schedule. And once we have the public hearing and it's adopted, then it will be official.
Great. Question? That'll be great, so they can, they can approve it the third, as you say, late April or early May meeting?
Yeah, depending on their schedule and their workload.
You don't expect any issues, right?
I did get one email from the private school up in Fell Township, and it was concerning bus service and transportation. So I told them that they do have the option of either presenting testimony at the public hearing when it's scheduled, or they can provide written testimony that will be read into the record. But that's the only comment I've had so far.
Good, good, anybody have any other comments, questions? Under our development reviews? Comments about our zoning here, holy, yeah.
Yeah, lots of them, yeah.
Not for sure, like Sapa, our consultants would have taken care of these.
Yeah, they have, they have, well, the problem, the problem with that is when you're dealing with nine municipalities and you're going in nine different directions, or eight at this point, because Clark Summit is done, it, it's a little difficult for them to.
To get everything.
Get everything perfect, let's be honest.
Yeah.
And a lot of the comments deal with the individual options that they had in doing their ordinance.
Right. Some of them are minor too.
Yeah, and like I said, Scranton's, because we had to get that forty-five day period in there, like I said, I don't think that they were quite ready. So they had quite a few comments, which Carolyn just told me yesterday have all been addressed, but she still hasn't heard from Don. As to what's actually going on there.
Very good, okay.
Okay, page seventeen. Page seventeen lands of Purdy, Conley and Dilt. This was a real interesting one, it's a very simple subdivision, they're taking an existing fifteen hundred square foot lot, subdividing it in half, and each parcel on each side will take half of that parcel. The problem with it was, they gave me no information to review. If you look at the list. I didn't have addresses, I didn't have zoning information, I didn't have a location map. I had to kind of interpolate where I think it might be, to see whether or not to fit the zoning. They did not mention anything about water service or sewer service, which is required, there was no roadway data. But since all they were doing was splitting the lot in half and adding it to two adjacent lots, I gave them conditional approval, I was being, you know, kind, but this is one of the worst submissions I have seen in a long time.
Was that on the back of a napkin?
No, it was on a piece of paper really, but it, it could have been done on a napkin.
And I'm surprised you gave them a blessing of conditional approval, Stephen, wow, you're getting soft in your old age.
Oh, as I said, all they were doing was subdividing the lot, so it's not really going to make a difference.
I agree, I agree, but nonetheless.
Yeah.
Okay, what else you got?
Page. Twenty-eight, twenty-nine, the orchards in Waverly. We previously saw this subdivision, it's a fifty-two lot subdivision, eighteen lots, they're single family, and then they were going to do a twenty-five to thirty-four unit senior housing structure. They actually cut down on some of the, the units and the lots, originally they had a cul-de-sac, or excuse me, a loop road, and they're changing that to a cul-de-sac, they did provide some of the other, for other information that we needed, so at this point, we are recommending approval. But it was a revision that we did back in July of last year.
The original plan, the road was actually going out to Glen Burn Road, it was kind of going to, but there was an issue with the ownership of, there was a right-of-way there, but they didn't know who owned it and it was too. But there was an issue with the ownership of, there was a right-of-way there, but they didn't know who owned it and, and it was too much of an issue, so they went back to their original. Loop road with a cul-de-sac.
Good, good.
Thirty-nine. S and G acquisitions lot line revision. We previously reviewed this in November of last year. The way they had the lots subdivided, they were actually moving the roadway. And when they moved the roadway to create another lot on one side, they then created. Three double frontage lots on existing homes on the other side. And you can't really create non, or excuse me, double frontage lots. And unfortunately, those homeowners, when they bought their lots and built their homes, they were gonna have other homes behind them, not a roadway. So we call that to the attention of the borough and said, you know, what, how are you gonna do this? The developers have since changed the plan. Instead of creating eleven new lots, they're combining all of the lots. They're still. Gonna make that new lot by pushing what would have been the roadway over, but they're not showing a roadway now, so. My comment is just, you're still gonna do the same thing in the future. And we're not gonna allow it because of double frontage lots, or we're not gonna recommend it be approved, so how are you gonna handle it? The other thing was when they did their application and when they showed the plan on the, on the, the plot plan. The acreage is different. They've only included in the application. The large parcel, not the two smaller parcels that they're creating. So again, it's a discrepancy in acreage. And finally, and this really doesn't make a difference because the land is, is owned residential, but originally in the plans for the cop, for the borough's. Comprehensive plan, it was listed as light industrial and it is basically surrounded on three sides by light industrial uses presently. And the last one is page forty-one and forty-two, lands of Curcio the third in Fell Township. This is a lot line adjustment shifting between two lots, just shifting it sixty-five feet south. Couple of minor comments, but the, the major one is. Under the township ordinance, all lots must front on a public street. The existing lot that is there fronts on a dirt road. And now they're subdividing that lot and the lot that they're subdividing isn't even on the dirt road. So they didn't give me any information on how they're gonna handle that. Again, it's not on a public street and I don't know if the existing dirt road has a PennDOT Highway occupancy permit. That wasn't included on the plan, which is required. There is no information relative to lot sewage test pits. Again, there's no sewage in that area. I don't know how they're gonna handle that. And then, as I said, a couple of other minor comments. We originally received the subdivision in June of twenty, June of two thousand and one, but I couldn't find it in our files. But we're missing a whole bunch of files from that period of time, so we may have seen it, we might not have. And again, giving it a conditional approval based on how they're gonna handle that roadway. And that's it for the reviews unless the board has any other questions.
Anyone, any questions, comments? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve our development reviews as submitted.
Make that motion.
Thank you, Bruce. Second by.
Second, I'll second that.
There you go. Very good. Do we have any other business to come before the commission today?
I have not submitted.
Any public comment? We have no public comments out there, right? Before we leave, everybody satisfied with the Zoom meetings? Is there any way we can improve this or you have any issues with any of this?
I think they're great. I mean, I'm able to pull up the documents on a separate screen right on my computer. I don't even have to print them out. It's good to see Steve and Mary Liz are getting younger as the years go on.
And thinner.
On rail, my son, who's now living in Manhattan, wants to know when he could get a ticket to Scranton.
Good.
When he retires.
Closer than we've ever been.
Twenty-four, so I guess that means.
Got a ways to wait.
Forty-plus years.
The first study, like in nineteen eighty-five and Joe Corcoran was county commissioner, Bruce, so. The price just keeps going up, but.
Yeah, obviously.
Yeah, but actually our study, the last study we did showed the price was down. Because they were saying that the two bridges, the Delaware Vieduct and Pollens Kill Vieduct. Were gonna be somewhere in the neighborhood of three hundred million dollars to replace and we found out it's less than a hundred thousand to repair each of them.
That's it, in order to replace them.
Yeah, that's a good thing.
That's right, good. Any other comments for the good of the order? We'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
Hey, thank you all for taking time out of your busy days. See you again next month.
That's good.
See you guys.
Take care.
Good job, good luck.